Father Lord, thank you so much for the beautiful day you've given us and for help and thank you to so many blessed and Lord if you bless us with it. We're thankful for this time together, Lord, we pray for wisdom and knowledge and understanding in God's, Lord, just help us to make wise decisions for our town and our community and our citizens and Lord we are thankful for the many good things you do for us. Lord, there are those in our community that are hurting for various reasons, we pray God that you touch them in a special way. These things may ask me your name, I'm here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I wanted to start off by giving a quick overview of our 2015 physical year audit. I do believe I have some very positive news to share with everyone. The first thing that I'd like to bring to your attention is whether we had a deficit or a surplus at the ending of the year. And I'm very proud to report today that the 2015 City of Ransfield had a budgetary surplus of $161,537 ending this year. There are some really good highlights to talk about in this. One of the things that I think say a great asset to the city is how our revenues have grown even above what we originally budgeted. We originally budgeted $3,847,000 in revenues and this year that revenue stream went over $4 million. It ended up with $4,081,000. So there was an increase of $166,000 above and beyond what we projected. At the end of the physical year, September 30th, 2015, we have some special revenue bonds and the balance of them were all healthy. We have a four and five cent state gas tax. At that point in time, it was right at $30,000. Our seven cent state gas tax fund came in a little bit over $48,000. The capital improvements fund at that point in time was barely under $150,000 sitting in the bank. We have a correctional facilities fund. I assume that would be build a larger jail if we need, I'm not sure what we use it for, but it has $28,000 sitting in it. Our fire and fire truck and equipment fund, which is a portion of the rental tax, had over $86,000 sitting in that. And the three mil fire tax fund had almost $15,000 sitting in it. So the fire department is sitting basically at that point in time, over $100,000 in their fund. Now there is a fire department special grant fund, it also had over $9,000 in it. And the tornado memorial fund at that point in time had right at $21,000 in it. A total for all of the special fund balances was $386,948. The assessed value of the city itself, that's all the municipal properties, $47,661,000. When we took over in 2012, the assessed value was $43 million. There has been almost a 10% increase in value of Ransfield. Our sales tax, we saw an increase in our sales tax of $119,000 over 2014. One of the things I think is a true driver of the sales tax is this facility that we currently reside in right now. The North Alabama Agribusiness Center does a fabulous job of bringing people from outside of Ransfield into Ransfield. And while they're here, they buy gas, they buy Doritos, they buy McDonald's, whatever it is, they spend money and they bring it from outside to inside. To give y'all a true idea of the economic impact that this facility has had on the municipality of Ransfield, since the day this location has opened, when it opened in 2010, we ended the physical year 2010 with a sales tax volume of $2,135,000. We ended 2015 at $2,823,000. That is a net increase over that time period of 32.2% increase in sales tax revenue. It can't be attributed solely to the agri center, but this agri center has played a huge portion in that. And so if you have a chance and you see Mike Sweat, tell him thank you for the good job that he's doing. I spoke with him on the way in here today and he let me know of the next 52 weeks that this facility is leased for 50 events and we at this point in time, he don't know if we have an open weekend here in that period. So it is gaining ground. And as of last week, the agri center board met with a special consultant on revamping some fee structures, which would essentially, basically almost double the operating revenue that this thing produces, at the same time attracting in more events. So there's a lot of positive things going on here and if you do see him, pat him on the back and tell him how to work because he deserves it and he's done a good job in the City of Ransfield. Our sanitation fees, we didn't see an increase in the amount of revenue derived from that. In 2014, we had $593,000 collected for sanitation fees. In 2015, that increased to $620,000. There's a total increase of $26,855 just in sanitation receipts. Now, I'd like to attribute that to two individuals. Mr. Ricky Dawkins has done an excellent job with the sanitation and I'd like to thank Mr. Freeman down there. He was very instrumental in bringing in a new revenue stream in the roll-off dumpsters. That has paid dividends. Just in the last year, we have seen an increase in four and a half percent. Our ad valorem tax has increased. In 2015, we had $256,000 in ad valorem tax. In 2014, it was a little over $244,000. There was an increase in the ad valorem tax of $11,207. That's a net increase of 4.6%. Now with the good news, there is a little bad news, we have had some things that we have had some decreased revenue in. And it seems as though as cars get more energy efficient, gas efficient, gets better mileage per gallon, people driving pre-assist. Our gasoline tax, which is based upon per gallons, has dropped a little bit. In 2014, we had $91,950, or 2014. In 2015, that did drop to $88,716. There was a net decrease of $3,234 or a net decrease of 3.5%. That right there pretty well sums up a good overall view of where we are financially with our 2015 audits. I think we all at this table, every single one of us can say we're definitely proud and every single one sitting here had a part to play in these good numbers. So to each and every one of you, I sincerely say thank you. I have provided a overview, a printout to all the media and I have some extra ones. So if you did get one and you need these numbers, please let me know, I'll have them available. Now, I do have a few other items on my agenda tonight and one of them is safety coordinator. I had the opportunity of speaking with our new police chief today and the discussion revolved around how the existing chief or the prior chief functioned as the safety coordinator. And here's the reason that we have a safety coordinator position. It allows the city to take a substantial discount on its workman's comp insurance through ANEC. And periodically, ANEC will check in and want to talk to the safety coordinator. And so since Charles Chief Centers has retired and Chief Stewart has taken over, I just wanted to make sure that we're all in the same boat. And in speaking with the chief, he said he'd be more than happy to take on those responsibilities. That pretty well sums that. And essentially, the safety coordinator position is something, is a mechanism for us to get a discount on all our workman's comp insurance. I've got two items from the wastewater treatment plant that we need to, that I'll need to bring up for a vote tonight. One is from Jim House and Associates, this was the changing out the rotator assembly at the pump and stay or the wastewater treatment plant. We have an invoice right here for $12,042. And there still is probably outstanding about $2,500 left outstanding on this bill. I'm going to ask tonight that we empower the general fund to pay it somewhere in the neighborhood of $14,600 for Jim House and Associates for work done and future work to be done at the wastewater treatment plant. The second item is from V.I.S. Incorporated. It is to, for cleaning the influent wet well at the headworks. It takes a super duper vacuum truck. They have a vacuum truck that has a 10,000 PSI hydro blaster. It says a 27 inch high-grade industrial vacuum truck. They'll come in and suck everything out. I will not go into details, it's what's down there, but it will clean it out. The estimated cost of doing this is $6,610. As far as maintenance wise goes, this is something that needs to be done about every two to three years. We're a little behind on that schedule. We have not had this right here done during our administration. So this is something that happens, it should happen once or twice during an administration And so I'll be asking us to authorize payment up to $6,610 to V.I.S. Incorporated for the cleaning of the influent wet wells at the headworks at the wastewater treatment plant. The last thing I have on my agenda, and this is where I'm going to ask for the advice of the council. We have the Leachate project that is in full effect. The construction is getting near completion on phase one. Phase one of that project is right at $1,615,000. Our bond attorney, David Regelstein, was actually quite surprised that we had not gotten a construction loan already for this. Generally speaking, he said that it's part of our letters of condition for us to get the grant and or to get the loan. And it is standard operating procedure for any project above and beyond the half million dollar loan. It was under his advisement that we do this as quickly as possible. So we really have two options at this point in time. We have two different banks that we could possibly do the construction law for from. We have one here locally, First Southern State Bank. They had offered us a rate of 2.75%. Of course, that will only pay the interest on the amount that we draw down from that loan. And there is a bank out of Colorado that had sent us some literature. It's called Cobank. It is a bank that specializes in projects to do with the USDA. It said that they, their specialty is water and several projects. They offer a construction loan at a percentage of 1.65. That's what they said their current rate is. Now the question is, do we pay a little more to stay local? Or do we pay less and know how to stay with it? And that's where I'd like some input from the council.
My input is stay local. That would be my vote.
Mayor?
You know, I, my position hasn't changed. I think we pay the invoices and until we can't pay them no more, then we borrow the short-term money. You know, I understand that the conditions of the permanent financing as far as the line of credit, but there's creative ways around doing that that would actually save us money and the interest. We've paid a good portion out of pocket up to this point. If we borrowed enough to finish, you know, paid one, and we got to the point where we're already closed permanent financing, we can always have that line of credit, have money for our work, and borrow the line of credit up to the point where we reimburse the city for all out-of-pocket expenses the week before we close on our permanent financing.
Essentially, that's doing exactly what construction loan is. You only take the money when you need it. So you're not paying the interest on money that you haven't borrowed. They're just saying that you have X amount that you can borrow. So it's an order discretion how much of that we draw down. And so, I mean, it's, we're saying the same thing, just in two different ways, the construction loan.
We're not saying the same thing because we're talking about spending more money on interest expense. We don't know, we don't know when permanent financing is going to be closed out.
We're not, I don't know.
Do y'all know? I mean, I've talked with Bill Cross, he hasn't given me a day on permanent financing. It's when construction is completed.
The only money that we pay interest on is money that we would actually draw down. You take out the construction loan for the full amount and you just pull what you need.
I got that. What's missing though, what they want, what they want is a construction line credit in the full amount, in the full amount of what you've constructed, what you've built, okay? And the way that permanent financing works is they come back and they'll pay you 80% of that, okay? So our match is that 20% that we're stuck with on that line. We've saved interest expense by paying out-of-pocket these expenses up to this point.
I think the concern, what we got though is since the weekly post bill is about done, once we pay that off, we don't have left that's in pocket to pay that.
Yeah.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up. We had money in the bond, in the capital project fund to pay this to Los Angeles until last Until we paid Jimmy Trevor $75,000 last week.
Well, that's what bond money was. We got it for specific items.
But I can't find authorization to cut that check for $75,000 out of that fund to pay that invoice.
We made authorization for the whole amount back when we signed the contract and done that.
Fair enough. So what are we bickering over this information with the X credit for?
No, there ain't no bickering. We're just, do we do the construction loan with Cobank or do we do it with the First Southern State Bank?
I say local, I say local every time, every instance. My point is, the question is not that, it's paying this invoice out of pocket.
We paid all that bond money that we set it up, we set that up a long time ago.
This invoice right here is outstanding, is it not?
Yes, and we'll have another, we'll probably have another.
We had money in the capital project fund until last week.
The capital project fund was supposed to run like a line of credit, just like what we're talking about, a construction loan.
Sure.
Yeah. So we got pulling all the money out of all of our different accounts to pay this, which is saving us a little bit of interest, but.
But it's giving us some interest.
Yeah, but it's stopping, I mean, it's stopping other things from going up, you know, to leave the business.
But we got an invoice from last week, and we'll talk about the last council meeting. We were going to have a debt workshop. We haven't had that. I'm talking about an invoice dated March 30th for $75,000 even, that the city has paid, I found out today, that has brought that balance of that capital project fund down to $76,000. And we don't have, I don't know who authorized that payment out of that account.
They just send those, those bills as they get, I mean, this, this project is finished basically. I mean, it's pretty well basic to the purpose.
So what's the point of running the bills through the meeting? It will pay in the.
The council, it was ran through the bill. When we said that.
You ran a bill through the council meeting?
No.
Last council meeting, the invoice is dated March 30th?
We, when we awarded the contract to Jimmy Trevor, we said that at that point in time, that that construction renovations would be paid for out of the capital improvements fund. So we did.
And it has been.
Well, that's where it was, that's where it was authorized to be paid.
We talked at the last meeting, we talked at the last meeting about paying this B.H. credit invoice out of that fund. We talked about the balance being over $150,000. Knowing good and well, we owe this $154 and change.
No, we said that, you brought it up, we said that there was money in there, but we also mentioned that we had other obligations with that money too.
And that was the obligation, that was what was coming through.
So y'all saying your fine was a check last week for $75,000 to pay that invoice when it was never, the payment was never authorized?
It was authorized, it was authorized at the time we accepted the contract from Jimmy Trevor.
I'm buying that off. If I had done that, y'all'd be jumping up and down.
The only problem we had is you, at one point, paid some of the sewer invoices out of the bond money that we already had delegated for the Weekly Post, but we got that situated.
I paid one.
We had everybody came and we had the thing outside that talks about the sewer loan and the grant and everything. We asked you to look into a construction loan, stated why, we all went over it, you had no problem doing that. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I can't speak on that.
If you're talking about conversations dating back to the construction loan for the sewer project, I was all for a construction loan to float those costs until we did a general obligation bond of 1.5 million dollars. But y'all know good and well, it's dead hints, one for the terms and two for the timing. That changed the whole picture. So who authorized paying of that invoice last week?
I thought that sort of came in.
Who authorized it?
The council did.
The bill came in, it was paid because it was already authorized months ago when we.
Okay. So why don't we run bills through the meeting?
Often times, we normally announce things.
And we look at it.
And there's been under 750 just to show transparency, that people know this is the project that's been done, this is the phase that's been completed, this is how much it's cost. I mean, we've talked openly about the bond issue, the money, what has been delegated for, I mean, from, I don't know, a year ago probably with the Weekly Post and what the money flows and how it's separated. I'm not really sure or understanding where the issue is.
There was not clear authorization to pay that invoice. And I know how we handle in this term, I know how we've handled every invoice, they have been put on a voucher and run through this meeting. And we vote, it's a standing item on every agenda of every meeting to pay every bill that's brought to this table. And that invoice was never brought to this table. That check's already been made out, it's already been cashed. I just want to know who authorized it?
When we have budget meetings and we have, and we have line items, this is my understanding, is when we have line items and there's budget meetings, that, when we pass the budget, it's non-authorization to automatically pay that money unless we have, it's under $750 or we bring it in front of the council. We clearly passed contracts with Jimmy Trevor, you and over, extensive numbers on what things were going to cost, if things were going to go over in certain areas, we got it out, we talked about it. And at that time, it's already been authorized that way because we specifically authorized to pay Jimmy Trevor a certain amount for what to do. And the thing, just because the bills are split up in certain phases, I don't understand what the problem is.
Well, the majority of these bills fall within the budget. So when you pass a budget, you're saying you don't, that's not a spending authorization? I mean, I don't want to get, I don't want to be incomplete. I just want, I just know clearly that bill was not paid the way we paid every invoice.
I don't know that, that every invoice that's came through on that project came through the table before it went to be paid. I don't know that because we have some roots that, we have proved that before and when those invoices come in, they're to be paid. And it would be the same thing in that B.H. credit. We've approved that and when the invoices come in, we've already approved that. The only problem with the B.H. credit is that we don't have a construction loan to pay out of it.
You're saying we're paying, we're paying bills, we're paying invoices that are not brought to this table and approved?
Well, they have been pre-approved when you, when you sign that contract. Yes, they have been. Some of them, I'm sure.
There's not clear authorization to do that. I can't find any, y'all can't point any, you can point to the contract. But we review, we've done it this whole term, we review every bill and we bring it to the table and we pass it. Down to $750, as much as that aggravates the fire that may.
I'll call the league and get clarity on that if, and we'll go back in a couple minutes and throw them out. I have no problem with it, I'll back it. And like I said, my vote is to stay local because.
Okay. Well, I'll be asking tonight that we move forward with a 1,615,200 construction loan through First Southern State Bank with the caveat that it is to be fast-tracked, we need to have it signed and in place and give to our attorney.
We can get this done by Wednesday, correct? No. Not going along with it. Have not.
I'll bring it out for a vote and you can vet that in a minute.
Absolutely. It's brown suit.
How do we go about getting it fixed?
Getting what fixed? Paying this invoice when we got the money in the bank?
It's not just this invoice, it's the finished project.
Sure, sure. Which is in the ballpark of what, 300,000, 3, 400,000?
No, with this one right here, there's about $600,000 outstanding left on this, this project.
Well, our accountant walked in, Betty, do we, I'm sorry I've been shooting a place, but do we have the money right now as it stands not to get that construction loan and to pay everything from the general fund and cover, cover it? With that, other things going late, you do have surplus in your general fund, possibly enough to cover it. Those, you know, I can say is the biggest part of that would be your sand mountain electric, I guess, privilege, privilege packs that just came in. That's a part of the general fund budget.
There's no doubt we've got to borrow short-term money to finish the construction, but we don't have to borrow 1.6 million dollars.
We're not borrowing it, we're getting the construction loan up to then and then.
Yeah, but it'll work just like that invoice that you paid last week, there's no authorization done without me knowing about it. That money will be drawn and spent and there'll be no accountability because apparently we're paying invoices that are not brought to this table and approved.
Everything has been, everything has been brought to this table. There's definitely not, there's definitely not. There is definitely not, there is definitely not going to be the consensus put in this council meeting that any one of us has done anything under the table, because everything has been discussed in council meetings, voted on, and approved. And we can go back and prove every single...
I just wanna know who approved the invoice last week?
The council, and we will gladly pull those minutes when we get.
Please do, because I don't know that you'll have minutes for an invoice dated three thirty of two thousand and sixteen.
No, but we'll have an invoice and minutes approving the entire total that we owe for Jimmy Trailer.
The question of how you fix it, we borrowed enough in a construction format and draw it as we needed, enough to finish the project. When we get construction complete and we're ready to close our permanent financing, we go back to the bank and say we need to bump this to one point six a week ahead of closing our, our permanent financing. Bump it up, reimburse this fund, and close the permanent financing a week later. There's how you do it.
I think I'd rather go with our attorney's recommendation.
Sure, sure.
You know where I stand?
Well, explain to me, because Julie, I've got the numbers, and why are we going ahead for the one point six million when we don't have to have that? That's my question. I mean, I know what we owe, and I have no problem borrowing that, to get, because it's gonna be done. Why are we gonna go that much farther?
Well, you only have to pay interest on what you draw down on.
So, you're saying they can put a figure, ten zillion dollars, if there's such a thing, and if you just borrow three hundred thousand, you're gonna pay just on three hundred thousand?
Yes. And it was under the advice of our bond attorney, David Riegelstein, he said it's just standard operating procedure. You get a construction loan equal to the amount of the project, and draw down it, down on it as you need. Once the USDA loan comes in, he has it automatically pay that loan off. Uh, and then the, the rest of that money, if there's, if, we'll only borrow six hundred thousand dollars out of it. The rest of that money, they return to the city, uh, from that, that loan, the USDA loan. And then we would use that to reimburse the internal funds that we borrowed, because we do owe some internal funds.
The paving, we, we've expanded all the money in debt that we were gonna...
Yeah, I'm, I'm aware of that, but I just wanna get that. I don't understand why I put the number, you're only gonna borrow so much money.
Brandon, I, I don't, maybe this is the wrong way to look at it, but I look at it like when I built my house. I had to get a construction loan, and you're approved for so much. We're approved for one point six million. It's the way I understand it. Doesn't mean I'm gonna borrow that much money to build my house, but however much money I borrow is what I end up having, having to finance to pay. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
That's how I look at it, but I don't know if that's the right way to look at it.
I don't either, that's why I ask you, because I don't know.
Yeah, it, it's not like we're borrowing, you're paying interest on one point six million dollars. And we will never even come close to, to that there. And so, and, and on the off chance that we did, and which we won't, you, you're still not looking, you're looking, what would be the total interest on a year of that at one point six five?
Well, we don't even have to entertain that up yet, because we'll get our loan program before then.
Lexi, that's just my figures, I don't understand the, like, the...
Well, I didn't either, and then we got advice from our attorney, who does this all the time, that's why we hired him. It's just normal procedure. We can't trust our attorneys, and we can't trust anybody.
Um, well, I did not mean for this to take up this much of the time in the workshop. Uh, I think that's all that I have for this deal.
We can go ahead and move into the building. Call the meeting to order Graham.
Present.
Holt.
Here.
Ledbetter.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Underbound, here. Ready to look over the minutes?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented by the clerk and dispense with the reading thereof.
Okay.
Motion by Graham, dispense with the reading of the minutes, and approve as presented, seconded by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we empower the mayor to take out a construction loan with First Southern State Bank, one million, six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars, with the closing date to be, I don't know, what's the earliest we can make the closing date?
I think the first day, one month.
Okay, there you go. Closing date of April the sixth, two thousand and sixteen.
I think the last day.
Motion by Graham, seconded by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I vote that. Motion carries.
I make a motion that we, uh, contract V.I.S. Incorporated, uh, for cleaning out the influent wet wells at the headworks at the price of six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars.
Second. Motion by Graham, seconded by Holt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I make a motion that we authorize the payment of up to fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars to Jim House and Associates for the, uh, change-out of their rotator assemblies at the headworks.
Second. Motion by Graham, seconded by Holt, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
I don't have anything. What was it?
Um, this is not on the agenda, but Kelly handed this to me, and we are, um, on a deadline for this to, um, appoint the voting delegates, and this is in the league's business session, uh, when we go to conference. And so, I'm gonna make a motion, um, that Joey is the voting delegate, with me being the alternative, and David being the second alternative.
I'll say, motion by Ledbetter, seconded by Freeman, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have.
I'm just gonna make a lot, I was gonna get some people's opinion on this too. We got the farmer's market set to open June the twenty-third, and we're gonna keep it in the park. But I'd like to sit down and talk with the chamber, because we've got some stuff that's a little bit different as far as, we used tandy a lot last year, and since we're not using the debt services that we was for court, she don't have none. That's the free time that she did, and I wanted to try to get with the chamber to see if I might get some volunteers from that, because the fees are the same, we're doing, it's like three dollars from the cap county, three dollars from any other county that's set up. But the way my work schedule is, sometimes I can't be there three o'clock. So, I mean, I can be late and be about at all of them, but I'm gonna have to check if I can get with the chamber to get some volunteers to help out. And that's all I have.
Uh, Dom, let's see, let me start off here. Uh, the annex is almost finished, and I'll just go right into that. The annex is almost finished, and we had to have the gas turned on so the plumbers could, uh, to, uh, to do the, check out the water heater. So, I make a motion that we have that gas turned on, and it will be DC gas, that's where it'll be. That's where most of our other, uh, buildings is located, DC gas, so, we'll do the same thing as that.
I'll say.
Any opposed? Second. Motion by Lingerfeld, seconded by Ledbetter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, the next thing is, uh, the contract with Jimmy Trailer didn't cover, uh, a couple of porches on this end of the building, and then an access hole up into the top of the building to get to the heat in our units. Um, he said he would, uh, this is an amendment to the original, uh, contract, and for five thousand, five hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty cents, he will build those two porches, the two, four-foot wide by eight-foot porches on this end of the building over the doors, uh, put an access hole on the far end, up into the attic, uh, to be able to get to servicing of the units. Right now, you have to go, if you're gonna service those units, you have to take the cement tiles out, climb up the ladder, go on top of it, climb all the way up into the cement, which is really not the good way to do it.
This access door?
It's a, it's a hazard for somebody getting hurt, or at least tearing down the cement, so, that's not a good way to do it.
Now, the access door also, they build wide enough to where if a unit has to be replaced, that you can actually get the, in our unit, out that access door and do what you need to, so, that's the reason for the, uh, the width.
Yeah. Uh, they, there's some vinyl that was damaged around the building, and that covers, goes out, uh, the damage of the vinyl and some holes in the brick that was from something. I don't know if it's from tornado damage or what, but anyway, I'll make a motion that we accept this.
I second it.
Second it.
Motion by Lingerfeld, seconded by Freeman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
When I got the, the bid the other day, uh, that bid and, and to do a few things, it was, uh, two added up to about twenty-five thousand dollars. Well, that was five thousand, and to do our parking lot down there, to fix the drainage and, and pave the whole parking lot, is gonna run around, uh, we got one bid for ten thousand and one bid for twelve thousand. And that's to do the dirt work, take all the asphalt out, bring the dirt work down to the right grade, pack it, and then put asphalt back in. And so, I put that in the form of a motion to go ahead and get that part done. Uh, Ricky Dobbins has been working with some people on that to, to do this, so...
I suppose when I asked you, you know, we talked about using the city workers to cut that out, and that's...
That's, that's part of, it'll say, I'll put this ten thousand and say about fifteen hundred if we can cut it down and do that part of it or something, so...
I, I'll second that. Motion by Lingerfeld, seconded by Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Um, and one more item pertaining to that building out there. And, uh, it's got a, it, the roof is getting to look a little bit old, and was thinking about if we could, uh, put metal roof on like the rest of the municipal buildings have and make it look a little bit better. And it's got one small leak back in one place, so, this is something I'm bringing up. It's, it's, it's between nine and ten thousand dollars to do this, going, just bringing it up, and it's, you know, throwing it out on the table for it. I'll make a motion and y'all do what's wanted.
I, I think it'd be beneficial, it'd be for the long-term preservation of the building, you put in a metal roof, and you don't have to worry about it for the next thirty years. It would also, um, aesthetics purposes, it would have the same look and feel as the police station, city hall, and the, uh, pool building back there. They're all the same color and have the same roof.
That's a, that was another variation of the, of the, uh, original contract if we wanted to do that, so...
I'll second that motion.
That's another variation.
Is that on this list, though?
It's the second term of name. He just gave it to me, and I, and he didn't give us the proof sheet for it, but it's on that list, though. No, not third of name, fourth one, no.
Um, I'm not opposed to doing that, I would...
And he, and we can...
I would, I would like to wait a little bit.
Okay.
But, um, I, so I would, if we voted no tonight, I would have to vote no.
Okay.
The motion, uh, Lingerfeld, seconded by Graham.
So, you wanted to wait, or are you gonna withdraw, or are you...
No, I, I'll, I'll tell you what, I'll, since we've, I've spent some words on it, so let's, you know, let's, uh, I'll withdraw my motion, but I'm ready.
Uh, I'll withdraw my second.
Is that all I have? No, no, I got one more. Uh, had a little bit, I don't know, kind of confusion of mine, but, uh, tornado shelter, demanded of the tornado shelter. And we've talked about this before, but, uh, I think it's, uh, right now, it's on the police, and, uh, they, they were shorthanded the other night, they needed some help. Uh, is that something that y'all think that the fire department can help us with, uh, help the police department with, or what y'all's thoughts on that? I'm just bringing it to you.
I, I, I think the primary responsibility should be on the fire department, and secondary on the police department. During the event of, uh, severe weather outbreaks, uh, I think it's beneficial to the citizens to have the, the police department actually patrol the streets, um, that way, if there's any obstructions in the streets or anything, they could be on the spot, uh, a lot quicker.
How's the police department work far as perhaps they are the threats of the bad weather? Is that automatically people's just sitting on standby waiting to be here, or...
Well, all officers know, have the understanding of, you know, the bad weather is, we may have to call something in, of course, that creates overtime and stuff like that. The issue with the, the tornado shelter, if it's, obviously, if it's Monday through Friday during school hours, then the public has no access to it. That's the calendar, if they all do that. If it's after hours, um, if I'm not mistaken, the chief centers have it to where if a tornado warning, warning goes to cap heaven, then we unlock it. A tornado watch will store out area, we're gonna unlock it. Now, that being said, if it's for Geraldine and it's showing that it's, it's tornado watch and it's going below Geraldine or whatever, then we wait till it's a warning, you know, um, and it's simply because, the fire department's in the same situation we are. They have two, three people per shift.
Yeah.
You send one person over there, that person's there for the entire duration, regardless of the fire or police. You know, the police department, if they go over there, then you got one officer to patrol the entire city during this time. Now, I know it sounds a lot worse than it is, um, a suggestion of mine would be having someone designated to come and sit at the, at the shelter. We'll still unlock it, we'll still have the key after hours and stuff, but once it's unlocked, and this designated person or persons for several, uh, show up, then we leave and go do our job. If there's an issue there, they have a radio, they can call us, we'll come back and, and resolve the issue, um...
Since you're the chief, you got anybody in mind?
Well, I mean, we could get with the EMA, and see if EMA can send volunteers up here, and we need to be somebody that's a radio, somebody that can radio us, hey, I've got whatever.
And non, it don't necessarily have to be non-ambushy personnel, but personnel is not on duty at times. We have such thin staffing with the police department, fire department anyway. We're tying one body to that place in, in so long time, or...
There's probably gonna be a... Right, when you need them somewhere else.
And even saying that, there are some, some cities that will have a council member or council members designated, but then the police department goes and locks it, you know, and so-and-so shows up and they manage it, you know, until, for any time being necessary to lock it. And if they have a problem, they call the police, police don't have a problem with that.
Volunteer, right?
Well, yes, that, that is something that, you know, is obviously up for discussion, and, you know, if y'all want us to call somebody in, as far as overtime, we can have one of the persons working, you know, one lock it and stay there until the person will call or whatever shows up. I would suggest even the EMA or somebody like that, if, if the police officers do.
Right. Well, we don't, we don't need, you know, police cars, we don't want them damaged either, but our fire, uh, trucks and trucks are a lot more expensive.
Yeah.
And, um, I'd rather have those housed, I mean, obviously, if they have to be out for emergencies, they need to be out there. But if it's not an emergency, I'd rather it be housed in the building. It could be had, oh, it could be a lot of things going on, and because we'd have such thin staffing, when on duties over there, then they're gonna have to take an engine truck or something that they can respond to, call from there.
Don't they have a...
And I, I talked to Thomas about it, this was something that him talked about, that was some of the same thing that he said, you know, but we, I just wanted to get a, a discussion, you know, of what, what we need to do.
Because it's...
And if we can't get somebody to volunteer, if we can't get somebody to volunteer, if we've got somebody that wants to come in, you know, and, you know, we have to pay somebody, I'd rather have that than to have one of our police cars sitting over there all the time, or...
But that's, that's gonna be the thing, because if you did have a fire, they're not gonna drive from the station. Well, just a regular vehicle over there, and they'd have to leave there, go back to get a fire truck to go over and call, so...
Well, they could drive one of their smaller vehicles over there, you know, to exploit, expedition, whatever, but then if they get called, then they gotta go back and get it, so... It's, you know, then you're, you're backing up on that.
Because of the tornado shelter, somebody has to be there all the time, so the, they can land dogs, guns, or something, so, when Anthony said that they did that, there's got to be someone there at all times.
Yes, that's right.
So, I mean, you can't have somebody like that and run off and leave the fight. You gotta have somebody to police it, but it don't have to be a police officer.
I think it has to be somebody in the board, though.
It, it may be, I'd say.
I, I think...
Well, other times, when we, when the EMA, they have people specifically that go and open valley head... Valley Head has somebody, because when we do the, the, the conference calls, there's people come in that they're designated to do, that's their job, to go open the tornado shelters.
I can tell.
And I wouldn't care to approve, to pay somebody to come in. I'd rather have that cost and us not talk about overtime when it comes to making sure that that's open for our citizens.
And I'm sure you guys are, but fortunately right now, we're not in a position to work ahead. You know, y'all can discuss it, and let me know how to handle it, and it'll get taken care of, so.
That's, that's why I would have run it.
And, and like you're saying, though, to beat the death wars, either fire department or the police department, when you send somebody over there without bringing someone else in, I mean, you're, you're cutting your force down to half, you know, just to beat the burgers.
Um, speaking of the escort staff, are you ready to have the poster job opening yet?
Oh.
Matthew Cranton's decision. What's the status on that?
Well, that's another thing that I wanted to talk about to see how that process works, because there's a lot of processes, and I don't want to know exactly how it works. Uh, and, and yes, I'm, I'm ready to ask for a lot of stuff.
Ask the wagon, John. We're ready to give you anything you want.
Well, I heard that.
That's a tape route.
On the serious note, yes, I, I do need to replace him, and I'm going to have to, I don't know the process, but since you're ready, I'll go ahead.
It's just voting to post the job internally and then.
Me, too.
Wait full time?
Yes, and vehicles, because we're down, I didn't realize this, but, um, we, we don't have spare vehicle. We have. Every officer has a vehicle, so there's a lot of unusual improvements.
That's probably, well, I think on Wednesday. You made it there, are you still the department head, Mr. Wednesday?
No.
You're not in anymore?
Fair enough.
I hope we can talk Wednesday.
I mean, I can bring up posting of the job tonight, because I had asked when he put in his resignation if we were going to, that you weren't back yet, so. If, I can bring it up right now, and so we can get the ball rolling, because we're about to get tornadoes. And plus, I'd rather have more cops on the road and get this ball rolling.
Or, I mean, I'll, I'll go with the proper procedure, since you're.
Well, I make a motion to post internally first according to our job resolution. Um, two police officers starting pay at the bottom of the, the starting rate at the pay scale. Starting tomorrow.
You're voting to post it?
Should I do it Wednesday? Start at Wednesday so we can get it together? Let's do it Wednesday, April sixth, to post it.
Post it, I second.
Yes, that's what I'm doing.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Freeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
As far as the, the vehicles go, I was just looking at our desk. Did we make a payment, Benny, in twenty fifteen? Sorry to put you on the spot, but the twenty thousand dollars to the three chargers?
Seventeen.
Okay, so we only owe twenty thousand left on that?
Uh, we still have two thousand to go.
Okay. So we owe forty thousand. Okay. And one payment this year and one payment next year?
That's correct.
The, the comps, we, we got the three chargers. For sixty thousand dollars, basically twenty thousand dollars. And, uh, we, and part of our fleet renewal is, uh, is paying that off, and, and we need to figure out how we can get another vehicle. We may have to look at a, a non-vehicle vehicle for the time being, until we get this retired.
We're going to still go.
Are there motions to pay for the month of bills?
I have a motion to pay a bill.
I second.
Motion by Ledbetter, second by Freeman. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Motion by Freeman, to adjourn the meeting, second by Ledbetter.